Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. I want to turn the meeting over to our interim city manager, Mr. Mike Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Excited that you all are here tonight to hear an update on the efforts of the local reentry council and the many partners that are part of our local criminal justice system and helping people who are coming home from jail or prison. Academic has been the primary organizer of this agenda that we've received for tonight. We're hoping that we'll have various presentations from the folks in the system who are assembled and leave at least a half hour at the end for both questions and any public comment that the council would like to hear.
And doing public comment, and maybe there, you know, town will present itself for us to do it before the end, just depending on how the conversation is going, but just make sure that, you know, you provide your input, that if there are things that we need, we need to know, we haven't been in the situation. So if you're hearing something and it's not working, and it's something that we need to change, we need you to verbalize that. And so this is all about attempting to create a space for people to, one, help create an initiative that's actually successful. And so there are a lot of people in the room, including Mr. Plutania, who is our current prosecutor. And so there are a lot of people who make a lot of decisions here, and so this is the time to make sure that your voices are heard. If we're not doing it well, if we're doing it well, we just need to hear what needs to be done so that transition can be more successful.
So I, we've organized the agenda based on, starting with an update on some of the data around the reentry population. We have a robust set of data from the jail that Neil Goodlow has been analyzing in the last several years, and I think it's an important introduction to the population of need. And there's some, I think, some pretty compelling pieces of data in that presentation that point to some potential program opportunities. And then a series of promising practices that are in operation in the community. I suspect that there's no one here who says they're doing enough in any one of these areas, but there are some really good starts going on in this community, and some things that have already yielded some positive impact. And so you can see under promising practices that we have, including coordinating across agencies, connecting to work, pre-release planning, determining risks, connecting to supports and services, connecting to financial support as well. At any point, if there are questions or comments, I think that we want this to be conversational, and if at any point it makes sense to stop the formal presentation, we can do that as well. Each one of these folks is aware of the need to get some community input on all of these things, and so we've asked everyone to be very brief and to talk about what's working, but also gaps in their individual practice. We'll, we'll get started with Neil Goodlow.
Good evening. My name is Neil Goodlow. I'm the Criminal Justice Planner for the Thomas Jefferson Area Community Criminal Justice Board. I also serve as staff to the local EBDM policy team, which meets on a monthly basis to discuss all matters of importance to criminal justice and mental health communities.
Could you mind spelling out acronyms for the EPDM?
Oh, EBDM is Evidence-Based Decision Making. It's a process that Charlottesville and Alamo County have been jointly involved in since 2010 as one of the first pilots I used to implement, an evidence-based style of decision-making in criminal justice that was established by the National Institute of Corrections. First slide, please. So, first of all, we sought to identify what we meant by a reentry case, who we were going to serve, who we believe the target population is for the reentry council to investigate in terms of the numbers, and then in terms of who these folks are and what their challenges are. So we settled upon someone who was serving in excess of 30 days at the jail, so 31 days plus is our reentry cohort. And we argued that by that time, someone has lost sufficient numbers of protective factors in their life, like a job and a place to live, and a car to drive, and a driver's license, and a lot of things that they would need to be successful in the community. So on average, we have about a person a day coming home from ACRJ on either Charlottesville or Alamo responsible charges who are reentering our community. So essentially, a person a day that, that is part of our target population. Over half of those individuals are serving more than 90 days. So the degree to which a person loses some of those protective factors obviously increases at 90. More than a quarter of them serve more than 180 days at the jail.
Ross?
We also found that a considerable percentage of these individuals are at low actuarial risk to recidivate. Thirty-seven percent of the individuals who are serving longer than 30 days at the jail are at low likelihood to recidivate in the two years after they're released, and that likelihood is somewhere between eight to 10 percent, compared to the highest-risk individuals who are, two-thirds of them are likely to recidivate over that two-year time period. We've also looked at the needs of this population using a risk-needs tool called Compass, and that, that tool is designed to predict the likelihood that a person will reoffend based on underlying criminogenic issues, crime-producing issues, crime-associated issues. And we found, not surprisingly, that more than one in two inmates were highly probable to have a serious substance abuse need that requires intervention. Almost one in three had a need for cognitive behavioral intervention, and just about one in three of them meet the minimum screening criteria for serious mental illness. And, and that tends to increase in this reentry population the longer they serve and the more often they come back. The next slide gives a breakdown of the kinds of charges people are serving 30 days plus in the jail. Seventy-eight percent of the bookings that lead to 30-plus day jail stays are nonviolent offenses. Many of these are probation violations, drug felonies, property felonies, and traffic offenses. But among this cohort, there's a fairly sizable number of people who have been in jail often, they've been in prison, they've been on probation, they have failed on probation. And so when, when we look at the average number of prior arrests for this cohort, the average is 12. The median is more like three or four, because there's some who have 20, 30, 40 arrests that draw that average up. And just to, so you can know a little bit more about this population, 68 percent of them were employed during the year prior to their booking. Seventy-one percent are high school graduates or have a GED. Seventy-two percent reported at least one expulsion or suspension when they were in school. Sixty percent reported no changes of address during the year prior to their incarceration, but 76 percent reported that they had sometime or often experienced financial difficulties during the year prior to their booking. And the unfortunate reality of this target population is there is considerable failure. When I looked at returns to custody during a five-year period from 2012 through the end of 2016, I found that if you had been booked in and served more than 30 days, your probability of being booked back in and serving another 30-plus day of jail sentence was 79 percent. And there was a substantial number, approximately 20 percent of this population, that were booked in five times over the course of that five-year period for 30 days plus each day. There's a whole lot more information behind this, be glad to sit down and discuss it with council, but that's, that's kind of the 35,000-foot view. Thank you.
Neil, since this data is a deep dive on the regional jail, in broad terms, can you just comment on the fact that we have the, both the state and federal prison systems in addition? And at one point, when I was heavily involved in reentry, we would say roughly 20 people a day were returning to the community from those systems. Is that about the case?
Twenty a day?
Not a day, a month. My goodness, no. Twenty people a month.
I do not currently have...
About EOC and/or federal?
Sure. So that number, the number 337 or whatever that was, those are only inmates. They may be state custody inmates, but they're being held locally. I currently do not have any visibility on data from the state or the federal level. We have been making some inroads with the Department of Corrections to be able to gain access to state-owned data that we can use to answer local questions like this, but at this point, I, I would be guessing at any number of state or federal inmates that are reentering the community, but it's not insubstantial.
And the diversionary program, how does that work out? Since we're talking about low risk and diverting people from even spending that 30 days, what happened with that?
So the money that was to, originally was intended to go to low-risk diversion. We studied the cohort, and we realized that many of the individuals that might have been eligible for diversion were there for charges that were not considered divertable. They were DUI charges, there were domestic violence charges, other charges of a violent nature that were inappropriate for diversion. The lion's share of those low-risk people who were divertable are felons, and so we're having ongoing discussions about how we might be able to craft programming that helps reduce the number of low-risk individuals that are in jail, because every day they're there is a day that they become potentially more likely to commit crime.
So did we not change the parameters of the program?
It returned to council, and there was an agreement to divert some of that funding for the initiation of the mental health court. So that, part of that money got peeled off for that purpose. You'll remember the presentation, which I believe is just before you and Ms. Hill joined the council, to, to put that money in there at year-end was targeting misdemeanors. And so as Mr. Goodlow was indicating, what they found was when you combine low risk with misdemeanors, there wasn't an adequate tool.
But there were low-risk and felons.
There are a lot of low-risk felons, and so that would need to be reconsidered, not just by the jail, but also by the coming home attorney's office.
Just in this population, 37 percent low-risk.
Do we have demographic data broken down by race?
We do. I do not have that data with me. As you know, we have partnered with Alamo County on a study of disproportionate minority contact with the entire system. That is one piece of that analysis, which is currently being conducted by a consulting firm.
Right. But we know these are adults, so...
These are, so this is adult disproportionate minority contact study that we're involved in.
Right. So another question I had, and I apologize for coming in late in the middle of your presentation, but when we look at the high number of individuals returning to the jail after they have extended stays or whatnot, and what programs do we currently have in the city to address those issues? I know OAR is trying to do work, and Mr. Herb Dickerson is trying to do work, but what else? What do we have here?
So we have the, both the District Nine Probation Office and Offender Aid and Restoration. OAR runs a very robust reentry program, which is a voluntary program. Folks can come in and get assistance for whatever their reentry needs might be. We're discovering that some of the issues that folks are dealing with is, or that they can get a job, but that job doesn't allow them to have a livable wage in, in the city.
Right.
So they're, so they're having difficulty making ends meet, and many of these crimes are either probation violations, or they're felony property crimes.
Hi, I'm Sue Moffett with the Department of Social Services. I'm currently the convener of the Community Reentry Council, and I'm just going to give you a quick update, since we were here in April and gave you a presentation on our strategic planning work with the support of the United Way. And at that time, the council partners established a vision that all people returning from prison or jail achieve their fullest potential, and that we agreed our mission was to create lasting solutions and opportunities for people returning from prisons and jails to thrive in our community. Currently, the council's meeting quarterly. We have representation from about 25 community agencies and other supports that attend regularly to that group. The, the council this year has four charges. They are to facilitate networking and enhance the capacity of service providers and community partners to support successful reentry, to engage in advocacy to enhance reentry services and minimize barriers to self-sufficiency, to educate the community about reentry issues and services, and to increase education, training, and employment opportunities in our community for people leaving incarceration. We've established three indicators to measure our effectiveness and our impact in these areas. They are to improve self-sufficiency by increasing income, decreasing homelessness, and decreasing debt, to improve pre-release connection to risk-reducing interventions and services, and Colonel Pomer from the jail is going to talk about what's, about what's happening in the pre-release programming at the jail, and specifically in the resource room that was established through the work of the council out there, and to reduce recidivism or rebooking at the jail. So we've allowed plenty of times for questions and discussion at the end. That's just a quick snapshot of the work, what the work of the council is going to look like now, in the year coming up, and I'm going to hand it over to Nadine from OAR to talk about the Coming Home to Work program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not a great public speaker, but I'm going to do my best. The Coming Home to Work program is designed to assist all city residents of Charlottesville who have felony conviction. The program assists individuals by providing employment readiness training, which includes interviewing skills and conflict resolution. We also assist with purchasing uniform tools and boots for individuals, as well as assisting with transportation via bus pass, or providing a referral to the community bike program. The, the program is an, it's an 18-month program, so individuals who participate in the program are given monetary incentives as long as they continue working, and as a part of, that's a requirement of participating in the program, is that you maintain stable employment and turn in your pay stubs on a regular basis. They are also required to attend an intro to banking and budgeting class that is facilitated by a representative from, well, from Wells Fargo. We have a range of employers who, who work with us in trying to assist with the, providing employment, including some restaurants. We have mechanic, cleaning, residential service, construction, electrical, and warehouse businesses that are willing to work with us so far. Employers who give our clients a chance are reimbursed at $5 an hour up to 40 hours a week over the course of 16 weeks. So that's a great incentive for them. We currently have 28 participants in the program. Nineteen are expected to complete the program by December of 2019. Three individuals graduated from the program last year, this past year, rather. Some of the challenges that I have encountered with my short stint, I just started working with the program in June of 2017. Some of the participants struggle with following through with mental health recommendations. Childcare is an issue for, for many of them, lack of technical skills. So some of the folks who have been incarcerated for a great deal of time, 30 years, 20 years, they struggle with adjusting to technology. It's like landing on Mars. Some folks have a problem dealing with authorities on the job, which is, which makes it difficult for them to maintain that job. And stable and affordable housing is another issue. Some of the participants struggle with obtaining from alcohol and substance abuse use. And I haven't experienced it a great deal, but I know that there are some challenges with employers taking the risk to hire individuals who have criminal history. So that's some of what I'm facing.
Madam Mayor, do you, ma'am, do you mind, can you, I don't know how specific I want to get about the employers, but I'd be, can you give us a little bit more detail on the sorts of jobs and the sorts of employers that these folks are working at in town?
Um...
And how, how many employers have joined the, the program? Is it...
I don't really, I don't have those numbers in, with me right now, but...
I don't want to put you on the spot, I'm just curious about...
Some of the employees, and I, I didn't mention this as well, most of the participants are earning at least $10 an hour, and we're moving toward trying to get them more. Some employers are willing to pay at least $11 an hour, especially since we're offering an incentive up to a reimbursement piece for them, so that has helped with boosting the salary that they're willing to pay. But some of the, without naming any specific employees, we have some construction sites that are working with us, and of course, a few restaurants, and that hasn't been so much of an issue. An electrical, we have a local electrical company that is working with us as well.
Most of them are locally owned, small businesses though, right? As opposed to sort of big corporate, like Home Depot or those kinds of places where the, the, the number of folks that they could take on would be much greater, just based on the kind of business or the number of employees that they have. In other communities, there are places like Home Depot and, what's the other one? The other...
I don't know.
They have like a, a program for veterans who have been in jail and those kinds of folks that they sponsor, but that is not the case for us locally. So we're really relying on smaller, locally owned businesses. Yes.
And can, one more question. How does that contact usually happen with, with the employer to the program? And is it, is it outre, is it outbound from the city to the employer, or is it, or the OAR? Is it, is it...
I do the outreach.
Or is there any, you do?
Yes.
Okay, so you, you outreach to the employer?
Exactly, yes. You know, when, sometimes when the participants come to the office, they may already have a job and just may be looking for assistance to kind of get them ready for the job. They may need tools, and from that, I find out who they're working for and make contact with their supervisor and kind of build a relationship from there.
I have a question, if I may, sorry. What, do you have any contact with the city's Job Center and also then the PBCC Jobs Program with Rich Skyler?
Yes, I, I mean, I haven't used the service a lot, but I know that it's available, and sometimes I do make referrals to individuals and suggest that they go there for further assistance.
I think it, you know, it's a two-way street. Our city groups and PVC groups working together, I just wanted to get an idea of what, what kind of cooperation and partnerships happening. So that's not just from your end, but from our end, too.
Right.
So that's, I guess, a question for maybe Holly Lee and Rich Skyler later on.
One of the, sort of, in the last bullet that I was going to talk about the plan, and so the opposite economic development in Holly's group and the approach of public work, have to kind of design a couple of options for using city openings to, to stop the aging.
Great.
And again, Mr. Obergefell, perhaps some actually money in his budget going forward towards...
Excellent.
So you mentioned the technical skills piece, your comment in regards to, it's kind of like people landing on Mars. I've seen that a great deal. The Housing Authority and the organization I'm working with, WICO2, is putting together a program in which we'll have volunteers literally come and do an eight-week Google course that teaches soft skills, technical skills, all of the computer skills, how to make electronic resume, how to do stuff on the computer other than just Facebook. But I will be more than happy to connect OAR with WICO2. We already have the volunteers. We just had a fundraiser to have the laptops, so we have resources. We can literally just come in and, with the volunteers, and teach the, whomever the individuals are, these technical skills. It's an eight-week Google digital, Google digital skills class.
That would be great. We, I mean, we have actually a couple people I can think of who have been looking around, and while they are working, they're still trying to fit in time or just find a place that will offer those type of services, and I wasn't really able to direct them with that piece of it, so that would be great, so I'd like to do that.
Well, I'm a director, so we'll, we'll chat after.
Thank you.
So is there anyone who has any comments till this point?
I have a quick, another comment, if you don't want to...
I was asking.
But I just want to tell you, you did a great job with your public speaking. That was a phenomenal presentation. Sorry, ma'am.
So is there anyone who has any comments?
Good evening, my name is Marvin Pomer. I'm the superintendent of the Alamo County Charlottesville Regional Jail, and tonight I'll be talking to you about the resource room and some reentry work that we're doing out at the jail. We've learned through the council that one of the best things that we can do is prepare individuals for release, obviously, prior to release. Before this, we would pretty much give a person who's been released, here's a list of services that you may need, here's the address, here's some phone numbers, help yourself. You know, OAR is right up the street, help yourself. But we've learned that by bringing these service providers inside the jail ahead of time, prior to release, making personal connections with them, doing risk assessments, doing needs assessments, getting their appointments set up before they actually are released, they're more likely to attend those sessions. There's a smaller gap between release and actually obtaining those services, which actually limits the amount of time that they may return to a criminal lifestyle. So what the resource room does is, we reach out to any service providers, welcome. We don't turn anybody away. We currently have Thomason, Thomas Jefferson Area Adult Career Center. They come in once a week. Charlottesville Department of Social Services comes in once a week. We have an employment facilitator comes in once a week. Fender Aid and Restoration is there quite often. Region 10 comes in, and we have several more that, that come here and there. Anybody who's within 30 to 60 days of release is welcome to come to the room. We get their release dates ahead of time. We kind of go around the population, kind of round up everybody we can, bring them into the room, and kind of sit down with them, and do a risk-needs assessment, find out who they need to meet with that week, tell them when that person's coming in, and then get them back in that room to meet with that service provider. So far, it's been very successful. We've seen an uptick in inmates who have a, an appointment or actually following through with that appointment when they get out. We've had job placements done from there. We're currently working with the reentry job fair that's coming up next week. Tom Gillette is coming in and working with some of our offenders who will be released prior to that 20th date, and so he can be ready with them with resumes. We also do Virginia IDs, birth certificates, just basic things that most of us wouldn't think about that are needed when you show up for that job interview. We try to make sure they have them before they actually walk out that front door. Any questions about the resource room at all, any resources we're offering at the moment?
When and where is the job fair?
Is, at City Space, I believe, it's the 20th, and I don't have the time off the top of my head.
And how, how long has it been since you've implemented this initiative?
Almost a year. It'd be, February would be a full year. And we're constantly improving. As guys come in, we say, hey, are there any services we're offering that, or that we're not offering that you may need? And if they give us some suggestions, we'll reach out to that provider and see if we can get them in there. And we've had great response from the community, great response.
So, I do have another question. So you mentioned Tom Gillette, so do they have access to all the resources of the Piedmont workforce network?
That is something that has just happened here recently, and our workforce, or our employment... employment specialist has just formed that relationship, so I don't have the answer for it right now. But certainly something, if not, we certainly could.
Okay. I'm on the PWN council that we meet quarterly, so just let me know if you need more connections.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So one of the things we're trying to do, um, still staying in this office, and one of the things we're trying to do now is for all centers out of the circuit, is there any points?
Do you want to come?
Central reporter, Facebook Live.
No.
Thank you all for having this event tonight. Joe Plutania, Charlottesville Commonwealth Attorney. If you could talk a little bit about, we're trying to make a concerted effort in our office as prosecutors for every sentence out of City Circuit Court, which are predominantly felonies, for individuals that we don't feel pose a risk to the community or a certain victim. We're asking that their criminal history not be a bar to them serving their sentence on work release, and we're not, we're anecdotally, I guess, seeing a difference, but I don't know if you're able to talk a little bit about what that program is? Does it assist in reentry? And also, some of the money is taken and set aside for the offenders to be available when they do reenter the community? I'm not sure if it's having an impact on the reentry work, but I think it'd be good for everyone to hear a little bit about that. And Judge Moore's been very supportive of allowing you to expand that program.
And I would like to tell Joe, thank you very much. Relationship that he and I have formed over the last couple of years has been absolutely phenomenal, and Judge Moore as well. Our work with these programs, largest has been in the forty-year history of that jail. Thanks in large part to the work that Joe's done at Judge Moore. That, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right. But if the judge is not on board, and Commonwealth attorney is not on board, not much is going to happen. So thank you, Joe, very much, but he's absolutely right. One of the, what they hold back is a person's criminal history. If I have to go by their criminal history, I cannot improve them for work release, but if the court bars their criminal history, I can get them out there working. If they're working, they can pay off restitution, they can pay back their fines and court costs, they can put some money aside, they can help support their families, which means less constraint on social services here. And a person having a job is one of those big key protective factors that Neil talks about. So if I can release them already working and have an established working relationship, it's better for everyone in the community. Those guys are less likely to offend, and it's having a big impact, Joe. Again, thank you very much.
Bless you.
Should I state my name? My name is Jeray Bell. I know a lot of these individuals in here because I am a felon. I'm a felon due to a domestic situation. So when I was initially convicted by Ms. Pather back here, my crime is violent, even if I was protecting myself in that sense. So when I re-entered into Charlottesville, even now, I'm lucky to have the wonderful job that I have, but it was very hard for me to get even a decent job because my, my record states that I'm violent. So people have that concern about how I may react to specific situations. When I was incarcerated, the reentry program did no service. You were just going to go. I guess there's some sort of pay between whomever, but there was no skills being set out for those who don't have education or were uneducated. They were basically, you were just taking the classes to take the classes. I do appreciate the people who were there, that were taking their time out of their lives to come teach us and explain things to us, but we weren't really learning anything. I feel like the women in the jail are under service. I hear them say a lot about the guys or the men, and I don't know if that's being generally speaking, but I want to know what's going on as far as the women are concerned. Ms. Battle, she has done a great job of trying to make sure women are squared away before they are released and enter out into Charlottesville again, but a lot of people aren't. So thankfully, I'm not in there anymore, as the conditions are absolutely disgusting. But I want to know for the women who are uneducated and unable to speak up, what are the plans for the women's side of the jail?
I have a question for you as well. When you, you said the classroom, sorry, you said, we have the classes, but we were just going just to go?
Oh, gosh.
Was that more of like, because you all weren't enthused about the classes, or you didn't like the teachers?
Well, one thing was, they choose you to go, it's not necessar, they were, at the point in time that I was there, they didn't, if they said you were going, you were going. So that makes a lot of grown women who aren't in there not necessarily interested if they don't think that this would be beneficial to them upon the release. There were classes for, I think the Pregnancy Center did a class about, you know, red flags for dating, you know, what, what to see in a person. And I know that Region Ten came, and they did some classes, we watched a few movies and got a certificate, but that was it.
So was that the individuals, did you find the classes were beneficial?
I think that depending on your educational level, it depends on if they're beneficial to you. I mean, I got in trouble, and I, I'm educated, so it was just a waste of my time, but I knew I had to go. There are other women who don't know how to type, they don't even know how to write a letter really yet. So I think that if there were things in place for them, so they can communicate better, and maybe build confidence for when they do get released, because it's like wearing a scarlet letter on you, upon your release, everybody looks at you like you're the scum of the earth.
What kind of things, like, do you have any ideas?
Well, I heard you speaking about your computer class. I just feel like a lot of the women out here that get in trouble or go through situations are underserved. And I think that anything, you know, they need clothes when they get out. A lot of us get out, and we don't have anything anymore, we've lost it all. Or to, depending on the charge, like I said, my charge is violent, so I know how people look at me. That different, different jobs allow felons to work contingent on the type of felony. It's not just a blanket, like, oh, we allow felons to work here. It's, okay, well, well, if we have somebody working the cash register, we don't want to thief, right?
Right.
Or, I can't, I have my nursing license, I can't work in a nursing home anymore now, because they assume that I'm going to be violent to an elderly person, right? So it's contingent on really the type of charge. And I really don't think that the Commonwealth Attorney's Office is really concerned about people re-entering into the world, because I've seen it time and time again, they want to stick you with as much time as they possibly can. So with regards to that, if I'm getting, I had an unlawful wound. I'm just telling my personal story. I was in an abusive relationship, protecting myself and got an unlawful wound. I can't just work anywhere. Or somebody may have been caught up with somebody who stole, and now they're an accessory to that crime, and now they have a stealing charge, they just can't work anywhere. So I think it's contingent on groups of people.
Thank you.
Got a response?
Did you have yet?
Yeah, sure. She's absolutely right, by the way. There were very few programs for the women who were in the jail. Over the last year, thanks to the Board and Mike, we've completely revamped the women's programming. We've actually purchased a risk needs assessment specifically based for women, defined exactly what women need, because their needs are different than men. And we have more programs now for women than we actually do men, so kind of tables have flipped a little bit. One of the problems we had before is the, the women in our jail, thankfully, are about fifteen percent of the population, and they, they change over very, very quickly. Average, like the state, is about thirty days for, for women in our jail. It's very hard to find programming for thirty days, someone's going to be there for thirty days. You can't do a, some type of job training program and so forth. So it is a difficult population to program, so that's why the Resource Room is so effective to, not much we can do for your way there for such a short period of time, such small groups of people, but we do our best to prepare you while you are, before you are released. We do have a significant number of women on work release now, and I would love to talk to you more and certainly take any feedback, but the programs and classes we offer come from the people who are there in the facility. We find out what is needed, we do the risk assessment need, and we base those classes based on what you need as an individual. So we do make you go to class. If you need substance abuse, you will go to a substance abuse class. If you need employment, we will send you before the employment specialist. If you need anger management, you will go to an anger management class. Yes, we do make you go, and no, not everybody likes to be in there, and I get that. But sometimes you have to bring people in. Now, I can bring them to the trough, I can't make them drink, but I'll get you in there. And most people are receptive once they're in there. And it's better for them, and it's, it's better for us too, so.
So the work release program, are people being charged daily?
Yes, they pay for the room, where the charge's eight dollars per day. That is correct.
So those are the type of things, I mean, I think for us to really talk about people being successful, that we need to figure out a way to subsidize those kind of charges, you know, those kind of costs. So just bringing that up while we're thinking about what, you know, part of the solution is, if people are being charged daily, and we're talking about come home, start again, that those are the type of things that we need to figure out as a community how to undo.
Thank you.
Nancy Carpenter, I just have a quick question. This is the ACRJ Board. Is there anybody from Albemarle County Governance here, or is this all city people?
City people.
Okay, because I was, I would like to see somebody from Albemarle County be here, you know, maybe at the next work session from Governance, since they're representing some of the population that we're not necessarily talking about. But the one thing that I hear that this goes all back to is, is trauma-informed care. I would like to suggest that the city find a way to make sure that people, staff in the jail, take trauma-informed care training, because you're dealing with a lot of people who bring a lot of trauma, and I don't hear anything about that. I think the Commonwealth's Attorney's staff, I think anybody that's in the Just Us system needs to have trauma-informed care, because we, we bring it whether we know it or not. The other thing this all goes back is to housing at the front end, making sure that the children that somehow get funneled into our criminal justice system don't have to face the trauma of housing instability. You know, we've been making some inroads in that, there was a carve-out for a little bit of money for people coming into reentry, coming into, back into the community for housing assistance. I think that still needs to go forward, perhaps more subsidy with that in conjunction with Albemarle County, because they got folks that are going to go back into the county that need a place to live too. I also think that you should lean on Albemarle County a little bit more, if you can, through whatever joint housing commission that you're on, for them to provide emergency assistance so that people don't face housing instability in the county, because there's nothing for them. If they have the same type of issue that a lot of people in the city have, such as a major car, I've mentioned this before, major car repair, major medical expense, having to leave out of town, there, there is nothing for people who live in the county that have to choose between paying, you know, Peter and Paul to be able to fall back on if they just need a little bit of help for their housing stability, and that's something that I hope that you all can bring forth. But it's definitely trauma-informed care, and definitely looking at subsidizing people with rental assistance, like, uh, going into the, going into the jails, and actually talking to people right before they get out to try and help them start that housing search. Thank you.
Oh, no, just a second, we're going to go to the next, we'll get you just after.
Good evening. My name is Brandy Bishop. I'm the Deputy Chief of District Nine Probation and Parole, and my role is to talk to you a little bit about our risk assessments that we do. So in the past, the risk assessments that we used really did not provide us with much information, and we did a lot of making decisions based on our experience and our gut reactions for what we thought would be appropriate for a situation, but we didn't have a real basis for why we were making that decision. And so, beginning in the early 2000s, we really began to understand the need to use an evidence-based risk assessment along with our other evidence-based practices, to use a tool that is validated in research and science and allows us to focus our efforts on our higher-risk clients. There's a graph behind you, and I'll explain that to you in just a moment. So both the jail and District Nine Probation and Parole use an assessment called the Compass Assessment. OAR has their own assessment, which is very similar to the Compass, it's the most in the OST assessments. And just for your information, OAR also uses the V-Pre assessment, which is the Virginia Pre-Trial Risk Assessment Instrument. That is to measure pre-trial failure rates. The RANT is the Risk and Needs Triage, this is for drug court clients, and everyone that's a client at OAR and who will be going through intake at the jail goes through the Brief Jail Mental Health Screener. So in regards to the Compass, this assessment, again, really allows us to focus on the needs of the client, and for us to focus our resources on areas that we know are areas of need, instead of cookie-cutter case plans, cookie-cutter programs. We're really trying to individualize our plans and, you know, hopefully help people to be more successful. So the graph, just to give you an overview of what this is telling you, so overall risk potential comes for every client. We're measuring violent and general recidivism risk, our goal is always lowered recidivism. It always has been, we just in the past, I think, didn't know how to successfully do that. So violent and general recidivism risk, these are factors that are based solely on criminal record. The next section now-
I have a question, just so that I understand what we're looking at. Is this like a hypothetical profile of an individual client?
It is.
Okay. And this is, what we're looking at, is that individual's chance of recidivism?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes. And I can tell you this, just in general, this client has a lengthy criminal record, and what's interesting to me is some of his scales for risk are very unlikely, and so I'll just explain to you, the Criminal Involvement section talks about criminal record, history of probation compliance or non-compliance. A lot of those scales come straight from their criminal record. The relationships, lifestyle, personality attitudes, family and social exclusion, these are self-reported by the client. They fill out a lengthy assessment, we ensure that they understand the questions that they're asking, and we're there to help them do that. But these really give us a view of areas that are concerning for both the client and for us in order to ensure that they're successful on supervision. This client, as you can see, has a highly probable substance abuse scale, that comes from his own self-report, and this is an assessment that we would sit down with the client, look at the bars, explain why some bars are more concerning than others, and create a case plan for moving forward in our goals for supervision. I'm going to turn our portion of the presentation over to DJ Cook. She's our Senior Reentry Probation Officer with District Nine, and she does a lot of work with our reentry population.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In my position, I see, I'm able to see Compass on both sides, as far as the institution and as far as the community. When an individual is incarcerated, Compass helps to drive how counselors in the institution help them and prepare them for release. So each agency that uses Compass, they can determine a norm group, so that norm group determines how they score the assessment. Those different norm groups, say for instance, could be in community corrections, jail populations, and in prisons. And then they can further be broken down, just like Mr. Cumber was saying, as far as gender, male and female, they have two different assessments for that as well. Each assessment also guides staff to help create a working plan for individuals based on their current status, and that way we can work together and create a case plan for them on the institution side as well as on the community side. One of my duties as the Charlottesville Reentry Officer includes weekly visits to Flavana Correctional Center for Women. There, I assist the women with questions about probation, parole, returning to the community. I hold a class there called Making It On Supervision, where I assist them, just basically helping them in general with ideas on what not to do, what to do, how to help them, giving them resources on what to do when they get out and they're on probation. I also support the Cognitive Community Program there that they have to reinforce their proso, their pro-social thought, excuse me, and personal accountability. And that's all worked within the institution in a specific building that they have there. While the institutions, they provide resources by the way of resource fairs during their incarceration and while the individual is there. The Department of Corrections, we've taken it a step further in the community, and we are now in collaboration with ACRJ, and we'll be hosting the Returning Citizens and Families' Resource Fair. It was formerly known as the Family Unification, and we'll, we'll be doing this biannually to address the concerns- And we'll be doing this biannually to address the concerns of returning citizens and their families. At this fair, we'll also provide their families with resources for returning citizens as well as their families. Overall, the objective is to connect the returning citizens and their families with as many resources to assist with a smooth transition into the community and to help them utilize the peer support that we rely so heavily upon.
Thank you.
All right, are there any comments? At the end, we'll have public comments again.
Angelina Khan, activist and local organizer. I want to first say that the system is designed to retain individuals and not release them. Setting unrealistic expectations from a behavioral standpoint at the time of probation without consulting with the individual who is being released from jail sets unrealistic expectations in general. If people probation, the probation department were to consult with these individuals being released at the time of sentencing, they would be able to create a, a goal achievement, like goals that needed to be achieved versus saying, you need to do this, this, and this in order to remain free. Right? So if those individuals could all come together and say, hey, this is the plan that I have. And they say, well, I don't think I could do this because of this behavioral issue or I have a substance abuse problem, I need, these are the resources I need. And then come up with a plan, maybe it's less likely that those individuals would return back to jail via probation violation.
That's assuming though someone has a plan or that they're.
Right. But if there are all of these services that are in place in jail and the jail is determining which individuals, that they, they said they were handpicked, right? So if those individuals are handpicked, then they have a list of the individuals who they want to, you know, be involved in these programs. Therefore, they can just contact the probation office, say, hey, I have this person here, this is your person, let's come together and work on a plan together. Instead of just having individuals picked and put in classes that they're not going to thrive in, creating numbers and less results.
And there's also a way, I think, that we all have to look at this differently. If you look at someone as you are of this crime that you have committed.
Exactly.
Instead of, we want you to have a successful transition, we want you to be successful at home, and we are partners.
Exactly.
Versus I have power because of my position.
Exactly.
And so I think, once you start looking at things more from a partnership standpoint.
Right.
And that I am here to truly serve you, then you can start coming up with initiatives that are actually beneficial to, to the individual.
That's exactly right.
You know.
That's something to look at.
Some of the conversation.
How do you say that?
I'm just, you know.
Is it okay?
I think that's what some, some wish to say. All right, is there anyone else who has any comments at this? Okay.
Well, one thing that I wanted to say was, I don't know everyone's relation, or I don't know the relationship with K-Tech, you know, the technological school down here, whatever. But if there are inmates that are here for thirty days, they said thirty days, right? Usually the women are in there for thirty days. And they're working on reentering them back into society, is there a way possible that K-Tech and them can team up with barrier-free classes for different things that might help them be able to earn a better wage here? Because it is expensive, so.
Actually, I think it's a good idea.
If it's hard to live here with a degree and working a good job, it's twice as hard to live here under the microscope of a conviction. So if we're really dedicated, and I say that loosely, to helping people re-enter back into society, I think that, you know, like truck driving, I don't think that necessarily has a barrier, or, you know, things like that for people. I know it may cost, or, you know, it also costs to live in the jail. So maybe those monies or those dollars could go towards actually helping people get through. And a course doesn't have to be long.
Mr. Murphy, to that point, CDC, CDC, CDL license. We have a, we currently have a course at PBCC for such. And I think the course is like, it's like fifteen hundred dollars or something like that to go through the course and for your license. What would that look like in terms of us, for city residents? Because unfortunately, we can't, well, me personally, I wouldn't be comfortable us putting the bill for county residents and whatnot. But from a city's perspective, for the individuals who are coming through OAR or one of our partners.
Or maybe a reentry.
I'm sorry?
Or maybe reentry? Because they pay to go to.
So the individuals who fall under this umbrella, if we were to create a partnership in which, I mean, we could look at potentially helping cover some of the costs for the class or is there a way in which we can have a point of preference for them to come through the Go Driver? Like if there was a connection for reentry folks with Go Driver? Or saying, hey, we also have the opportunity for you to go to PBCC if you follow these, this criteria? Potentially funding from us in some capacity.
So I'm not aware that PBCC had that course. I can say that it's been of interest locally in the past. It's something that we explored during the creation of the Growing Opportunities Report, both Sue with DSS and Holly Lee. And I looked at that, and at the time, the only places that you could do that were kind of over the mountain. And so it presented a real transportation and cost difficulty. I think with the better accessibility, that creates a whole different scenario. I would say that the program that you heard about earlier that's funded by the city that Ms. Brooks works in and is headed up by Mr. Spry has traditionally not been able to expend all of the dollars. We send it to them reimbursement style. And they'd be very open to exploring with OAR funding out of that pot. Should we have the need for additional resources because we did that spending? I think that we could probably handle that out of Human Services.
How much is that?
To a certain extent, this could be viewed as an equity issue in which we may be able to look at some of the monies out of our equity fund.
Councilor Bellamy, if you, you'd be talking about a pilot though? Because it would have to be a, something that's ongoing once it was established for a one-time deal. But again, it, it gets to my question about what, what our job center and growing opportunity programs are doing in general for the reentry population, not only Go Driver, but Go Electric, Go, Go Cook, Go, Go Trade Skills.
Yeah, I think it's a logical extension of those efforts. But there are things like this training that we might not replicate in-house. And it would be a good way to circulate people into an employment opportunity that offers a living wage. And we should look for opportunities there. I'd like to bring Holly together with Khaki's folks and figure out where we would go from there. But I do think we would have dollars to put behind it.
I mean, I know we are hitting from, just from a Go Driver perspective. I know we're tapping into some of the reentry population. I have a couple of friends personally with extensive backgrounds who are going through the program and now they're working for Kat. So I know it's hitting it in some capacity. Just don't know if we're reaching, I mean, but it took a whole lot of coercing to get them to go into the Go Driver. And I know Mr. Murphy, Matt Murphy in the back, as, as well as Mr. Herbert. I mean, there's been a lot of people have talked a lot to specifically brothers about if you come into this program, come into it. But then there's a lot of things that you also have to have set. For example, I remember Mr. Murphy telling me a very fine story right downstairs about someone saying, I want to go on the Go Driver. But then they didn't want to go and take the defense course to get the points off. And then there's, you know, license things that you need. And then, you know, if some individuals don't have a certain amount of fortitude and they're used to being able to push through, it gets really difficult. Like, man, forget this, I just go do something else. So it's an uphill battle, but I do know, I think it's working.
And I guess this is for Khaki and Mike. I had a conversation with Holly Lee not too long ago and it struck me that she was moving forward with a more of a case management approach that Nadine was talking about. That currently, they're not staffed or prepped to do that. But the, given the needs that they're seeing of people coming to want to be in the programs, just as Councilor Bellamy was talking about, there really needs to be more support services provided than, than a job training and skills program.
Yeah, I think it's the more expanded, both in terms of their offerings and also just the target groups that they're trying to be in, the point of training and eventual appointment. They've discovered that the need to really coach folks through the process to address them and actually to, but also really pushing to encourage to try to encourage people to show the next possible opportunity. I think everyone needs, potential, can be really uncomfortable. And so they've discovered the need to provide some of these sort of soft social supports in addition to solving the financial difficulties. How to make really good sense that they would grow the due debt in order to get people to commit to the programs.
I think Matthew's back there, he can certainly speak to this having been embedded in that program for some time. But, you know, that Go Driver or Go programs were developed with the idea that these folks were coming out of workforce development and economic development. And, you know, I like to say to Holly all the time, all we did was turn you into social workers, right? You know, because what they found was, anybody can organize the classes and the technical part, but, you know, walking with the people as they deal with what they're going to do about their car that's not working or their childcare situation or all the other, you know, services they may need to access. To be ready to come to work every day is really the support that makes Go work or not.
And that, and during the discussions that I had, because I just had some informal meetings over food the last few, last month, month and a half or so. And one of the points that came through was, you know, and I think it's coming up with, you know, peer navigators, but having staff members who are peers, which I'm putting the staff number part in there, to help navigate these services versus the people that we've traditionally hiring to, you know, engage people in those services. So that is something that I would like for us to, you know, to think about too. Who is the person that people have to contact? And can we do a better job, you know, with that? So hiring, when we were talking about making sure people have jobs, if we can hire people and wherever that fits in the city best to do this work and to see if that is more successful than we, than we have been. And that's, I think, one of, you know, the directions we can take.
One of the things we discovered, I think about certainly in the reentry world, about seven to ten year old youth world, is that peer navigators are critical to any of the programs. Regent and Blaine gave it a pretty important statement. And I know, I think there's some of the community that's sort of, they were talking about the way they're using that community gap to save the benefit of their work. But the two of them, they work like eighty hours a week. Most of it is paid. Most of it is not. Because they're doing this type of work, you know, in a way that is a natural connection that people can make a decision to do that. But that's supposed to be embedded in our system because we were talking about whether or not a connection we make directly is part of our process. I think that's one of the most powerful practices we have to do around there. Supporting peer navigators.
Do we currently have peer support or peer navigators on like city staff?
I think we have folks who do that work, but I don't know if they were hired specifically.
That's right. So like, maybe that's a potential solution, that's hiring folks where that's their sole job. I mean, again, I know we have folks who do it, but that's their job. And then that adds more hands in the pot to be able to address some of these issues.
And the request that it's, you know, like, who are those people currently? And who could they be? Right? So who can we hire that could possibly, you know, to these services and help expand? One, I think restart, but then expand this initiative. So one, we're helping with employment. We're making sure that the systems, because I used to work in the system, so it's a very different conversation as we're talking about people on the receiving end versus people who are the service providers. And that's, and even when you're talking about something, when I was, you know, on staff of Regent Ten for outpatient, depending on who you encounter, you could see higher, you know, probation violations based on who, you know, what case probation officer the person had. That says something maybe about the person, but we also never look to see if it was saying something about the probation officer. So just open it up to make sure that we are listening to maybe some of the warnings that we're hearing from people affected, you know, affected by this. And if we invest in them in terms of, you know, opening up potential jobs and having them navigate the system, then what we're coming up with, if we're hearing from the community that we are putting money into and it's not working, then that is, you know, that gives us the, hopefully, to change course versus stand on. All right. Any other folks have comments?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Richardson. And I, everything that I've heard this evening certainly comes together as to what I do. If you see me, I am definitely representative of something that is evidence-based and evidence-based that it can work, it possibly work. And I try to lead with that in all that I do. I feel that my primary responsibility, my job is an extension of, of what I do comes from understanding where someone, and understanding where someone comes from. And also, my job is to know what each person does in this room so I can be a connection. That job you were talking about, is there anyone that does that? That's what we do. It's our responsibility to know. You can go here, you can go there, and we are definitely on the ground. My job, my office is at Lee Park, Haven, The Corner, Ryvander Trail, all of those places where I find folks that, that feel like they are underserved. And I hear you, my sister, as far as your plight, I hear that. And, and that's what I, that's what we try to do. We try to meet people where they are. And as far as the city saying it's a city of second chance, I like to look at, at it as, we are a city that just looks out for people, you know, not got a second chance. Because that almost sounds like, we'll give you a second chance. And you know, when we were growing up, if our parents said that to us, then we feel like, okay, I done some, no, you deserve that. And that's what makes this peer connect, this peer. We put in folks that this is not something that's extra. This is, you're, you're right, this is what you deserve to have. So with, in that vein, it makes it easier to try to get someone. Now, it's not always easy because as Mr. Koemer said, you can, you can give them the class, you can leave people there, and, but not everyone's going to eat. Well, I didn't eat at first when things were presented to me at first too. But thank goodness, no one gave up on me. You know, I knew where I can go to, to receive help. And, and that's what we do. That eighty-hour week is so true, but it's just what we do. It's just, the phone never rings, I mean, stops ringing. So we, to hear some of the things that I've heard here tonight, of course, I needed to hear that. I needed to hear, I knew most of the resources, but I didn't know the sentiment behind what's going on. So that's with my job at On Our Own, On Our Own, and I'm giving yes a plus for my job. for my job, um, has, has taught me the importance. What Ms. Carpen has said about trauma-informed care is so true. Sometimes we're asked, we ask people to go here, to go here, to go here, and it can be an obstacle, and it can be like, "Well, first I have to go to drug court, then I have to go, um, get a urine screen, then I gotta make sure I go see my probation officer, then they ask me to do community service, 'cause I don't have a job, but I really would like to get a job, but I gotta do community service." We have to really think about what we're asking people to do, and what they're capable of, and do it in a human context. Um, the, the experience that I have, um, I try to, I try to instill in people that they're worth the fight, and, um, and that's where that peer connect comes from, that's the importance of a peer connect, that one-on-one, um, we are the same. And I have, um, I'll, I'll end with what, what peer means to me. Peer means to me that when I walk through the door, when you walk through the door, that, uh, we are the same, no matter where I sit in this room, we are the same, and we have something that we shared, where I don't feel like, "Oh, I'm so overwhelmed, I must be the only one going through this, I feel so unique," and, and you're not unique. It's just that my struggle may not look exactly like yours, but it's struggle nonetheless. So, that's what peer does, and that's why it's so important, that's why I'm glad that I walked into the doors of On Our Own, my life has blossomed, I have, um, I feel like it was divine intervention. When I walked in there, I did not have a purpose of going in there to work, I just did not have a place to go. So, when I walked in, I wind up staying, and I wind up listening, and, and, and I just, I just knew that, "Wow, I'm not so unique," and, um, and I started volunteering. You know, if you had told me I was gonna volunteer, if I was gonna do something, and I would not get something that says "Paid to the Order of" with my name behind it, I would be like, "You have got the wrong person, I do not volunteer." And, um, and the rewards were so great, so to be paid for it is just a bonus for me. So, Mr. Dickerson, you may come up and speak more about what we do.
And I'll just, um, say real quick, so we've been, um, meeting, and Mr. Dickerson was at some of the meetings, but the second chance is so true. I started calling it in our meeting, "Home to Hope," I don't know if that is, um, but that is something that, you know, we discussed, like, that whole name change and putting, uh, you know, making sure that when people see it, that they understand that we're trying to, you know, do something different, and so many of us have had second chances, third, fourth, fifth, um, plus, and that we are not called out on it, so, um, that is something during our group meetings, that, um, you know, so one of the people that were at the meeting said, "Oh, I felt like this is something that was already in place," and I'm like, "No, but if we maybe change, you know, the, change the names of, well, I haven't done it in our other yet." I'd hopefully that, you know, "Home to Hope," or something, you know, somewhere, or something that we can, we can.
That's so true, Mayor Walker, you know, um, on my visits to other cities, you know, it, it is not, um, presented as, this is a second chance, it's presented as, "All right, you ready to work?" You know, so, that's.
Thank you, Donnie. Uh, mostly though, I'm here at Dickerson Network at the, uh, Home and Set across town, as the outreach coordinator, in other words, I'm the street navigator, I mostly work in the street dealing with individuals who are, we are discussing, and I'm sitting back there listening, and I came close to walking out, 'cause we missing a very serious point, and that is education. I mean, I had eighty-seven people sign in yesterday, and out of the eighty-seven, I'm sure sixty were men that don't have shit to do all day long. Can't fill out the application, I mean, you look at some of these people's handwriting, I wouldn't hire you just 'cause of your handwriting. I mean, it, nobody's discussing the life skills, I ain't heard nobody come up here talking about life skills, and your self-esteem that's been damaged because of your incarceration. We talk about plus coming out of the jail, but anybody mention was coming out of federal penitentiary, and coming out of the state penitentiary was probably more than the little thirty days we talking about. Some of these guys did serious, serious time. I mean, I'm talking to a guy now that did twenty-two years, moved here from Washington trying to change his life, and wanna get out of that environment, which the Piedmont office did, a lot of these guys go to Piedmont House, not even from Charlottesville. So, I don't know if they qualify for city help, Almar help, but I know they need help, and they need bad. And if you can't fill out the application, what the hell you gonna put on the resume? This guy twenty-two years, what he gonna put on the resume? He cooked in the penitentiary twenty-two years? And I have had guys that I had helped do resume, they put that down, so that's a hell of skill, you cook for three or four hundred guys, but when you get out here, you can't find no job, 'cause I got a record. Thank God they moved the, the F off the application, but still people do the background check, and you still can't get no job. So, I got to babysit all day, individuals don't know what the hell they do with their self. You got people that can't go back to their families, family one of seven, you've got people with children paying child support, I mean, how in the hell you gonna pay child support, and they lock them in jail for not doing it? So, you get twelve months, so that's twelve more months added to this money, how you gonna catch up? It's a serious issue, man, and we just ain't dealing with the issue. Mostly people just don't have life skills, I mean, if you look at their education, some of them six, seven grade dropout. Now, who gonna hire you when you can't fill out the application, write your name, and you can't even count on a decent conversation? Somebody gotta address that issue.
How would you suggest we address it?
Well, each individual, I mean, we can't just put them all in a classroom and think everybody gonna be on the same level. People getting educated by the street.
Right.
That's why I got mine, I've been in state penitentiary and federal penitentiary. I was educated in the street, it just didn't work for me, and they locked me up. I didn't go through no second chance, I just knew I had to change my life. See, that you got to instill in people self-esteem or esteem, the way you feel about yourself. See, it ain't about how Wes feel about me, I gotta feel good about myself in order to be responsible for myself. I mean, these people got families and everything, man, and it's getting ready to get sad, 'cause getting ready to get cold, and I don't know what all these individuals do, but I'm gonna eat, so I'm gonna commit a crime, that's the mentality. So, we gonna just be talking about this and talking about this, just y'all probably retire, and we gonna still have the same dilemma.
Well, no. That's why.
That's what we're talking about, OG.
So, do you think we need more peer advisors like yourself, or like Cindy? So, we need like ten of y'all?
I mean, don't be me, Cindy, Richard, Kevin, Todd, I mean, who in the hell is it gonna talk about? See, we can speak a language, y'all probably don't speak that language, you know, we come from the street, so that's the qualification we got, somebody gotta be able to relate. Everybody don't, you know, I'm a outreach coordinator, but the title don't define me, I've been doing this fifteen years. Some pay for us, mostly by our tail end, but getting a khaki saw me doing it and gave me a job, that's, I don't know what the hell I be doing that for real, but I got family to take care of, so, but I'm gonna do something. But you gotta understand, man, just social media and all this stuff, it's such an influence, it's such an influence, I mean, the crimes and stuff people are committing now, most of them not substance abuse, you know, people that are sick, man, and then nobody wanna deal with the sickness.
Oh, gee, uh, excuse, uh, I'm sorry, I called something different. But, uh, Mr. Dickerson, what programs do you currently see working?
Well, personally, I run, not college, no.
I'm sorry?
I run a NA program.
Uh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Pretty much through up the city, that have people deal with substance abuse. Kind of like I was saying in the beginning, people's self-esteem issue, they medicate, rather than deal with the issue, they medicate, they put something on them, you know what I mean, so they won't have to deal, it's like we don't deal with life on lifetime, but look what life presented to you.
Right.
You know, you've been incarcerated, you was bad enough for you, when, you ain't had no education then, now you got debt in your jacket, too, now what? And I already told, anybody gonna hire me? And to forget a job, make eight, ten, twelve dollars, and where the hell I wanna live with y'all for that? That's decent, you know, so you put me, same back in the same environment, I had the same people that I was dealing with when I left, how in the hell am I gonna make?
Get a boarding house, a boardroom, or something like that. But, I mean, again, I'm, I'm very interested, I know, and I've been with you today, and it means, I'm, I, what other initiatives or programs that are indeed working, that we can look to duplicate, to try and put a dent into this issue? You have to figure out today, I mean.
The issue gonna be happening, it's gonna be happening, 'cause you gotta separate the criminal from the extrovert, see, that's two different things.
Right.
The criminal is gonna commit crime, the extrovert is trying to change his life.
Right.
You can't put these two together, who they gonna win?
Yeah, the criminal.
You know what I mean? So, that's the first thing we gotta do. Then we gotta get some folk that's really concerned, ain't concerned about the title, how much money they make, to get in the street and deal with these individuals. There's no other way, somebody on their level, I can reach down and get you, I gotta see, I'm near people where they are, not where I think they should be, for the, we feel where the thing would be, everybody be even, like, it ain't like that.
Yeah.
And just 'cause you got some statistic said these are non-violent crimes, these people are violent, man, don't think they're not violent just 'cause they ain't got convicted of a violent crime.
They just didn't get caught doing the violent crime.
Yeah.
Right.
It doesn't matter yet, but, I mean, as you can see, society's turning right a little crazy now, I mean, people doing stuff that you never thought would happen there. I mean, who you think would walk up in the church and kill up, you know, I mean, who in the hell do they?
Can I separate those?
Well, there, I mean, there.
What we're talking about here?
I mean, that's the reality, though, and that's one, and we don't like to deal with reality, but the hell we gonna deal with, we gonna deal with extrovert?
No, it's not trying to escape the reality, but we are not talking about, I mean, there are people who will always do those kinda things, we're talking about people who had, for whatever reason, they did X. So, now, we're talking about what do we create once someone comes home, so that they have opportunities just like anyone else has opportunities.
See, that ain't gonna ever happen.
Huh?
That's not gonna ever happen.
But it has to happen.
It's not gonna ever happen, not in this society, it's not.
Well, why?
High, 'cause I don't have the same education you got. I don't have degrees on my wall, why can't make me six or seven thousand dollars to take care of my family? I gotta work at McDonald's, and how, what's the man that pay you over there, forty thousand?
No.
Can you live in Charlottesville on the forty thousand, or three or four people in your family? Yeah, no, you can't.
But I think that's what we have to start, everyone has to start thinking of, like, how can we turn this around?
But who is everyone? Who's everyone you talking about? What everyone, who?
The community, the people in this room, the people who are in charge of council, budget.
Well, we claim we been doing this stuff, this is what we get paid to do.
But we know that, that's the whole purpose that we're having, and so we can, and so when we are asking the question of what's currently working, even though people are sitting in this room, and what they are in charge of is not working, we have to tell them that.
Okay.
Okay? So, I worked at Region Ten for five years, I can say some things that are not working.
I can tell you, too.
But me keep saying it, doesn't matter.
They say that, though, right.
Um, yeah, so that's, that's part of the conversation, is having, uh, if council is designating hundreds of thousands of dollars to things that are not working, we need to stop doing that.
I mean, they didn't demand us to stuff not working, or just keep talking about it, and have these started?
No, there's a lot of money.
I know there's a lot of money, but how it being spent?
Yes, so then, that's why we're here today, what do we need to do to change that? So, if you're saying there needs to be more peer navigators, then we heard that, that is a conversation that all of us are up here hearing, so then we need to take and make the investment, say, "Here's some resources," or "Where is Leslie somewhere, I saw her earlier, Leslie, how much money do we have where, where can we," that's our other assistant city manager, and we are saying that we want to put the money to where it's gonna work, so that we don't continue, um, recycling through this, then that is the conversation. But we all have to believe that it's possible. If we don't think that it's gonna change, or we're gonna think that we're just gonna be spinning wheels, and that we're just gonna keep paying people middle-income salaries that are not gonna do anything, then that's what's gonna keep happening.
Right, okay.
But if we say, "Hey, we need X," and if you come back to us in three months and say, "We told y'all we needed, y'all haven't done anything."
I wouldn't wait three months.
What I'm just saying, right?
Mayor Walker, I have a question, and it's really specific, so, and it gets to, uh, one concrete piece, so, in your opinion, does the crossings work? Did the Moore Center work? Did, do we need more Oxford Houses? What, what is the, what is a housing piece that you think would help you as you navigate?
Well, we need more Oxford Houses, we need no more crossings, yeah, we need all that, yeah. It works, I mean, everything ain't gonna work for everyone.
You need a lot of different things.
People gonna be weedy and weeded out, but if it save one person from committing a crime.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Or see, somebody been killing their friend, or raping their daughter, stuff like, somebody gotta get in these people mind, to show them there's a better way, you know, like you say it, if I say, "Well, it ain't gonna work," I got reason to say it, you know, I've been dealing with it all my life, really, man. Now, I thank God we got somebody that's trying to address it, but we gotta address it.
So, one of the other things that came up during these, um, dinners and luncheons was the fact, and I thought, and I brought it up, about if we can do some type of participatory style, like participatory budgeting, to where we see what kinda requests for funding comes in, so we allocate a pool of money to see what people are saying is, is needed. Um, and with the peer navigators piece, they're gonna be out, um, you know, out in the community, and then being able to say, once people say, "I have this need," that council has allocated some funding towards, so that that request can come in, and however that works, um, for us to be able to help solve this financial instability that's caused by, you know, being incarcerated, coming home, not having, um, you know, adequate jobs and things like that. So, that's two things that came up during, um, our discussion, is one, we need to make sure that the money is there, so, I mean, things, um, like fines, if there are people being charged for work release, and the city can subsidize that, there was a conversation around the, um, Fountain Fund, and, um, what they don't cover, who they don't, you know, who can't get into that, and if there's a way for census alone program, that maybe the additional money, the city can subsidize that, you know, in some way, and if that's a conversation, um, that can be had, if somebody needs a license and they don't have the money to get a license, that came up frequently in the conversation as being one.
Or get the fees paid.
Yeah, that this, um, money could be there if that request were, was made. So, we've been making, we, the money has been going somewhere, and just if we can kinda transform this into, um, you know, having people who've been effective lead this conversation versus the people who have been leading it, and see where we get, because we're not there with the direction that we have been going. So, that's just changing and making sure that the people who we are saying we are valuing in this Home to Hope, right, that we, um, create, you know, we assist them, so they are leaving versus us.
Well, let me just, if y'all talking about money.
One thing real quick, we touched on the housing piece, and I got you, but the housing piece, like, we're, we've been having conversations, myself, Ms. Khaki, um, Allison Kefina, Grant Duffield, Orlando, what's Orlando's name? Arts, yeah, Orlando Arts, well, anyway, we've been having small meetings, it's been some time, talking about having specialized housing, whether that's like a crossings too, whether that's specialized housing for, uh, small families, individuals who, um, a lot of these guys that we know are actually homeless, um, they may be within a certain age demographic, and they're homeless because they're bouncing from couch to couch, or from young woman to young woman, so, I mean, those discussions are indeed in place, how we do that and actually get it off the ground is the next fundamental step, but please don't think that we're just not building anything.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you, there's no question y'all talking, there's no question about that.
So, you were gonna say something?
I was, since you brought up that point.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm interested in opening a transition house for guys getting out, that's similar to Oxford House, where Oxford's built to it, but more structured than Oxford House, to help some of these guys get their lives together, and I got plenty of guys that wanna have me do it, you know what I mean? And I just need some pretty, I wish it was some size of a crossing, but it ain't gotta be that big, but we gonna have to do something.
Right.
But somebody gotta talk to these individuals one-on-one like a father figure, maybe, you know what I mean? A lot of these men are just so disturbed, man, I mean, life been just turned on them, and they don't give a damn, you know, and crime is gonna be committed, man.
So, those are discussions I think we can.
Well, I like being on one of them.
Yeah.
Can I, Mr. Dickerson, can I, can I ask another, um, I was, and I think what, what, you know, in different ways, everybody's trying to figure out, the, with, with individuals, with their own histories, and with what's going on with an individual, what is, what does the government do in the way of a program? 'Cause there is this, and the best programs treat people as individuals, but it's still gotta be a program that is designed, you know, for, to touch lots of people. So, I was very struck in a lot of what you were saying about how, I mean, you were very personal, you're talking about how these people, you know, self-esteem and, and... So, I was very struck in a lot of what you were saying about how, I mean, you were very personal, you were talking about how these people, you know, self-esteem and, and coming, you know, coming to a better place. In your experience, I'd be interested with Cindy too, what, what, you know, and you talked about narcotic, I mean, NA, there, there are programs out there that are very focused on, on individual. I mean, and this is one of the, you know, trained social workers are trained to do this, and trained therapists, and I'm just curious about what you have seen, and we're talking a lot about evidence-based, you know, programs, where we really try to figure out what works, as opposed to what's just a bunch of, you know, throwing something against the wall. So what, what have you, what have you seen that really has worked for helping, you know, change the, the issue you're talking about, just somebody's?
Well, for the most part, I do.
Motivation, self, I mean, the self-esteem, what you're talking about, that, that we could think about doing more, is it, is it more navigators, is it more?
But this, this is really an outside thing, I mean, not cause I'm a dumb set of money and you know, stuff like that. But they have twelve steps.
Yeah.
To take a person from their birth, always till they picked up the first girl, and then on to committing crimes and stuff like that. That's just one way. You have Region Ten who deal with individuals. I just ain't sure if they qualified to deal with the issues. Some of these, so you gotta ask some real serious questions, and you have to get the answer. I mean, we dealing a lot, folks with a lot of men in here, that's somehow, and somehow, these, I do, and I, I hit eighty-seven people sign that day. And most of these folks have many issues, but they just got this defense mechanism mask they wear, so you can't really see it till you get them separated from the game, so to speak.
Yeah.
And it has to be somebody that can separate, they have to have somewhere they can go, rather than sitting over there all day doing nothing. So if I didn't have a job, me personally, I've been committing crimes since nineteen seventy. If I didn't have anybody in my life to tell me different, what you think would be on my mind? I'd be either in the penitentiary or dead, you know, 'cause there ain't nothing intervening, ain't nothing pushing the crime mechanism, the streets out. So something has to change that, if we won't born from it. Somehow we made a choice, bad choice, whether it appeared first or what it was, to make these decisions we made. So now, we label criminal. So, how many times you gotta tell me I'm a criminal, 'cause I started believing in myself? So what's gonna turn that around? You know, that's what I do, baby, come on, you're the only one doing it. And it's everywhere, it ain't just the Haven, it's everywhere, on every corner. It ain't, this ain't got nothing to do with no race, this really don't. It's on every corner. I just get to see it all day, every day. I've, I've been sitting in this meeting my phone around six times for individuals need help, right now. Right now. You know, where they need to get to a meeting, where can I stay now? But if you stay in the street, you gonna get attached to somebody that's in the street that already doing something, they ain't got no business. But that's what P Street people do. It ain't, I mean, this ain't nobody on corner of the market. Crime is crime. Men are illness, is men are illness. You put both of them together, what do you think you gonna get? Somebody gotta deal with that system. You gotta deal with it. Well, if you ain't got no life scale, spend all my life in the penitentiary, what the hell I know about living out here? Taking care of family, I'll take care of myself. Get a few foods down, select, give me some liquor, I mean, I do it all day, every day to do it. Somebody gotta deal with it.
And so I think we're in a position where we can look at it from the whole side, the systemic issues, where people end up in situation like that in the first place. So when we're talking about education, when we're talking about stable housing, when we're talking about how people end up in the system, how long are they there? Are people the vertebral that are not, like, that whole process is part of it, but now we are also at the same time looking at that, at this point, where who would people trust?
That, that's always, that's the issue.
Um, who can, who can they trust enough to hear them, to even move in a different direction? Um, and I think that's where, where we've been kind of knocking, um, like running into brick walls where we're trying to force people who are traditionally, um, looked at as you. I mean, when I started working at Region Ten, you had the, um, you know, peer mentors who were the most important, I thought. But by the time I was going, you know, out of Region Ten, you had to have a masters, and you were being the person who was most important. And that is not the most important person, um, you know, in, in that equation.
But I mean, just 'cause you got masters, I mean, have you really got education, so you got masters?
No, but that's what I'm saying, so that's part of the system. Right, that's part of the system. So if you can't reach people, it doesn't matter if you have a degree.
Right.
Or not, you're just getting paid, and people are coming in and out your door, it's mandatory, but you're not able to assist.
Right.
But someone who's actually been in a situation, has healed from it, they are the people who can actually go back and, you know, move other people in a different direction. And it's just, it's part of this conversation about us, um, looking at things differently ourselves.
Every, every, everyone that came here to speak with was OAR, probation office, the jail should have peer specialists that can relate to the people that's come in, so we can speak the same language. You know, we gotta raise the language, for me to get information that I need from you. 'Cause my, my, my main train of thought is, how can I stop you from doing what you doing? What led you to doing this type of stuff? If you wanna speak the language, I can't identify with you. What on fuck you for? You know what I mean? And that's, that's the way to feel, man, I mean, we've been doing so long then. Now, we just lost trust in the system, so we do what we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is, um, Richard Coons. I've spent roughly seventeen years in and out of prison over the course of my life. And I battled drug addiction my entire adult life. Um, what I'm hearing here, and, and what I think that will really, really work, and you guys are hitting on it, is to have more people, um, to go into the jail. I've been knowing Mr. Coon for twenty years. Um, I've been knowing Mr. Dickerson twenty years, they know. I've never met no one in prison who said they wanted to really stay in prison. Um, so with that being said, the education is the most important part. But, a lot of times, in prison, we are reluctant to accept help from people that don't sound like us, don't talk to us, and we can't relate to them, or we feel that they can't relate to us. Um, for myself, I came to the realization that, um, being in the street so long, I was shot one time, and I went to the hospital, and I wanted help from a doctor, but the doctor also had never been shot. But I seeked his help. And I try to tell people, um, that I'm dealing with. They have the information, but we still don't bridge the gap because people like me are left out the conversation. So if we have people in place, um, I know, um, when Herb was going through his situation and getting clean, and we look forward to hearing him come to the jail. That was like something good. So if we can't see these people, we hear what you guys are saying, but we're not seeing the fruits of it working. And if we could get, like Mr. West was saying, that we have these peer supports, um, and, and put them in position, literally, um, to, to be the visual face of change. I'm in the process, that's what I wanna do, um, so simply sign me up, I'm willing to help out wherever I can. I'm tired of going back and forth to prison, I just recently got out in, um, August, and I brought my daughter here.
Welcome home.
Um, thank you. And my job now, my daughter wants to work the homeless kids, she's a little shy, right? So, but coming from having a criminal as a current, you know, it's my job to get her where she needs to be. So, we have all of these things that we wanna do while we're in prison, but the recidivism rate is so high, how can that be? There's a disconnect somewhere. And I believe personally that it's because the people that's in the jails, although they are right, they can't really reach the people where they're at, that's what Herb was saying. You can't speak the lingo, what you're speaking to the people might as well be a foreign language. So, if we could just bridge that gap, I believe that helping people and putting people in a position that look like them, and they can actually relate to them, without having the, um, the credentials, so to speak, we could, we could be the living proof that this thing works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just, um, we're gonna let, um, Charlene come up, Ms. Green, and then after, we'll have, we'll open it back up for, um, you're not leaving, are you? Oh, well, come on up then.
Thank you.
Hold on, um, Ms. Green, he's actually, no, you're fine, don't want you to leave.
I wanna say with a lot of love, Mayor Walker, he will be long. All the people out there already know that.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, OG.
My name is Kevin Lele. Um, I was, uh, I was formerly a part of this, uh, reentry initiative back in twenty eleven, uh, with Mr. Mercy. So, um, I believe that, um, I might have more data on this whole thing than mostly anybody that may be in. Um, I am a product, I am a product of that, uh, penal institution, uh, someone that has formally decided to make changes. I am a personal, uh, recovery specialist. I'm currently a part of an initiative between On Our Own and the Charlottesville Circuit Court, as well as OAR. So I am one of the ground soldiers. Uh, I came under the training of Mr. Herb Dickerson, uh, I am currently clean down for three years. I am also a graduate of the Charlottesville Circuit Drug Court.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, I was sitting back listening, and, 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 and I, I was listening to Mr. Dickerson, and, and him and I, we've had a great deal of discussions about what we believe what would work. And I know how emotional he becomes every time he thinks about this, so he was kinda like, he had the voice that. But we've been talking about, 'cause you asked, well, what's some of the things that might work? That might work? And him and I, we've been having a great deal of discussions about transitional housing, because I also too work at the Haven. So it is my job also too to babysit those that are sick and suffer on a day-to-day basis. Um, what we do need is that we do need transitional housing in spaces such as like the Oxford House. Um, there, there needs to be more opportunities for people that do come out of jails and on penitentiaries to kinda like re-enter. Um, fortunately for myself, I was blessed with a great deal of family that, uh, decided not to just burn all the bridges up. They kinda left some, a few splinters here and there where I could actually stay on. Um, for many of the people that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, that is not the case, that is not the case. And also to respond to what Richard said about having people on the foot soldier level. See, 'cause right now, um, it's really all about what people see in me that helps to change how people are behaving today. So they, the people are watching me on a day-to-day basis. So I am living proof that it is through the representation of the peer recovery specialists that other people find hope that it could possibly be done. Um, I, you know, I sold drugs for many years, I used drugs for many years, and I guess, like I stated, I just got clean about maybe three, three years or so ago. And there were a number of people that actually watched me through that process. And one of the greatest strengths that is gonna be provided to you with an initiative like this, is to have foot soldiers that'll be down on the street. Um, nothing ever really made sense to me when it, when it came from anybody that set up there, because automatically, there's an immediate mistrust. It's a mis, it's a trust, it's a mistrust for politics or anything that's associated with politics. So, a lot of times, it seems like more genuine when it comes from somebody that's been in the same conditions. You know, somebody that's already been homeless, somebody that also shot dope for twenty years, uh, like myself and a few others. So, um, I think one of the greatest gifts that could be given to the reentry society is to have folks, uh, like myself. 'Cause what I do right now is, is that I do, I, I'm, I have, I make an attempt to bring anybody on board, anybody. I let guys know when they come out of jail, yo, you could be a PRS too, 'cause you've got experience there, because there's so many of us out here, we'll never have enough numbers to defeat what we're, we're up against right now. But I just wanted to say that, 'cause it, it's time for me to leave, I'm not feeling very good, but I just wanted to make sure that we got across, yeah, we need houses. We need houses, we need some of that money to help set up things that would be productive. Um, and people like myself, we need to be paid, because one thing about it is, is that we paid a great deal to be able to stand up here in front of you right now. So, only thing it is, is just an exchange, because you're definitely gonna get way more than what you invest in, I can promise you that. If we buy into it, you get a great deal more. So I just wanted to express that, you know what I mean? We, we need a number of things, but we could begin there. We could begin there by getting people on board. Thank you. Thank you.
My man. No such thing as brief or cruel.
And, uh, you asked a question, uh, about an action, and, um, we know the problem. We have people in distress, we need help, and there's plenty of peer support people in the community that need help. But when you help, you need somewhere to direct these people, you know? You know you need housing and everything, you need. Um, I retired, I, I, my story is like everyone else, I came here from prison in nineteen ninety-eight. This city gave me a second chance, and I worked for Region Ten for twenty-plus years and retired. I went back to school, uh, became certified, and I worked at the Moore Center eleven and a half years, and I worked on a team called Recovery Support. And that grant was written, uh, I'm sort of disappointed because it's not being utilized properly. That grant was used to be more or less like a peer coach. Uh, the people, they found out that people in crisis, from point A to point B, if you didn't react right away, you lost that individual. You know, people come and say, I need help, I need help, I need help. And you go out there, but if you don't have a resource or, or really qualified, uh, support system to build a treatment plan, they fall off the radar, you know? Just that quick, and you have to react. That grant was made for that, more or less like a peer support, when a person called our hotline at Region Ten, we were supposed to leave the office, come out to the Haven, wherever, and meet this person, and help create a support system, and tell this person to come back to this agency, where there was resources, action, that we could do things. Now, I'm not here asking for the housing, I'm, I'm lost with that, you know that, you know? But to answer Catherine's, uh, question, that's one of the things that I think, you know? And I remember working, you know, I got a, I know everybody. I just networked from top to street. I'm a recovering heroin addict, I got twenty-six years of recovery, I've been on the streets, trust me, and I can give you a hell of a wall story, but I'm not up here for that. What I realized is that, I'm, the last executive director, you know, I knew him before he came to this agency. We were good friends, 'cause he met me at my worse, and we weren't the best of friends, we became socially with each other. But he said something to me once, 'cause I was, I had this vision, and I still have it, talking about, you know, what, what makes the system work. And I said to him, if everybody just do their job, and, you know, don't try to be, do your job, it works. If peer support be peer support and help direct the person from point A to point B, it works. But when I try to do Michael's job or your job, and forget about my job, what he said to me was, Carl, he said, we serve all of the connecting counties in the area. Region Ten serves, Louisa, you know, all of them. He said, this is what he reported to me, he said, Brett, the city of Charlottesville, the city council, if we could get more funding from them, we could serve the locals much better. You know? That's what he said to me. That made a lot of sense to me. And so I guess I'm up here saying, to answer your question is, you need more, uh, partnership with agencies that provide these services to do these things, you know? If funding is there, because there's a lot of peer support, there's a lot of people out in the community that can meet people where they are. And could really have that person ride for a little while. But if I can't point you from point A to point B, where there, where there are resources, then, you know, I'm not affected. I'm not affected, you know, I'm, I'm affected for a little while. One, one other thing that my vision was, they asked me to say, Carl, why don't you go and do a? One, one other thing that my vision was, they asked me to say, Carl, why don't you go and do an education class at Crescent Hall? I said, okay. And I'd go, and the people told me, go to hell. Get out of their life. Because I was violating their space, you know? You can't violate people's space. So what I did was created a recovery 12-step program. What happened over the time, that hour that we were there, whatever riffraff disappeared. But there were people that lived there was becoming to be real comfortable with it and was quietly walking up and saying, I got family you need to talk to. I got some. They were beginning to understand what this is about and they were respecting it. That's what I think a lot of peer support coaches could do, you know, in a recovery. I tried to do one in West Haven. It just didn't work, you know, I, you know, access base. But I think if you did more partnership, uh, I've always been disappointed with this recovery support team because they act like case managers now. When you call them, you know, say, okay, come to my office. Uh, let me look at my calendar. Can you come next week? That person is not going to show up next week. You know, because they're in crisis. I wouldn't show up. You know what I mean? Because like what everybody was saying, these people are in crisis. So I think more partnership, with funding from everywhere and create a resource and more peer support, if everybody just stick to their job and do it, it works, you know? In a way, I'm not on the program.
So you're saying that the current program is, I worked with Carl when he was at Region 10 or when I was there briefly, you were there longer than I was. But you're saying how you all used to go out to people, that's not happening.
That's not happening.
Okay.
That's not happening. And you need, because we had resources. We had funding, you know, to point people. Not only just put them in places here. We located people in other parts of Virginia, state of Virginia, you know? For some kind of, you know, environment, you know, it's, it's not always the best place for you. But you need that. You need the partnership. And I remember when that, when, uh, that executive director told me that, and that made a lot of sense. He said, I want to, but I just don't have the money from city council to create that, you know? But then that team just, you know?
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um. How long can you go?
I'm supposed to go to seven.
So we have three more.
Can you try to move along?
Two more, okay. Okay.
I promise this will be short. Uh, good evening. Um, when I think about all the folks who have come up here to talk about the ways in which they try to provide assistance to folks in the community, we do a lot of that, Todd and I, through the Office of Human Rights. So one of the publications that comes out of our office that initially was started through the Dialogue on Race is this Homecoming Guide. We had an action team through the Dialogue on Race that was a reentry action team. It existed of, uh, ex-offenders and community people who wanted to put a document together that was more than just that single-page sheet of a couple of phone numbers that often was given to people, uh, looking for assistance when they, um, uh, were released from, uh, jail. And so that group put together what they thought was a comprehensive document, uh, comprehensive enough that some folks from the State Department of Corrections got wind of it and, uh, asked for a copy of it because they thought it was a great template that they shared with other localities that tried to provide similar information. But, uh, what we do is, um, uh, since this is the third, I believe, third or fourth update of this document since 2011, uh, we go through and make sure that all of the resources that are listed in here are up to date. Um, we get assistance now through the Reentry Council for, um, the service providers who are a part of that committee to make sure that, uh, we're not missing anything. And then, uh, we put it in the document, we print it up and, uh, provide it for folks who, uh, ask for copies and, uh, we make it available online. It's available also as a PDF. And so, uh, we just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of this service that's provided now through the Office of Human Rights.
Who distributes these for you?
In the summertime, it's the interns, the K F interns. Uh, otherwise it's sent through email or the meetings that we go through. We take extra copies, Todd and I, and we'll give them to whoever asks.
No, I mean like, so y'all work with Haven, O A R and whatnot to get through?
Yes.
Oh, that's nice.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right.
How you doing? I'm Carl Brown. I know most of you. And I am the program manager of the Fountain Fund. So we're relatively new. Um, we're the only one of its kind, so let me kind of explain what the Fountain Fund is. So our mission is basically, we improve the lives of formerly incarcerated individuals financially through lending and community support. Um, basically our criteria is based off incarceration, income, and elevation. And that's very important because we want people to start looking at what their elevation. We don't look at, a lot of people come in just looking at it from a monetary standpoint. And so we go into deep detail about the partnership. Our overall objective is to build a partnership with the individuals coming in to help them grow to the other phases besides just looking at paying off their court fines. Um, and we get a lot of calls about people that just want to do that. And when they find out about what we want to do, it takes on a whole nother thing because we help with, um, helping people get better jobs. Um, we have a lot of partnerships, O A R, so I spend a lot of time at O A R. I have spent a lot of time at the Commonwealth Office, the Haven. So I kind of, when we talk about that partnerships, I kind of get what they're talking about, about the partnerships. I don't know if it's enough. I can't speak for everybody else. But I know I stay in my lane and I know, so it's very important for me to understand the various aspects and different nuances in this community. We also utilize the P M I, uh, Into Work Program a lot because we do have a lot of individuals who are interested once they get their licenses through us that I can funnel right to the P V C Z program and say, C D L is what we need to be going for, kind of give them some information. Um, but just in talking about the Fountain Fund, we have 146 completed applications. And when I say completed applications, one of the things we've been talking about is the literacy aspect of it. One of the reasons why we don't get a lot of completed applications is because of the process. And it's, it's not a lengthy process. It just requires you to do an application and bring in some document, documentation. Um, right at the top, I can kind of feel and I kind of know when a person is at that point without embarrassing them because they don't want us to, I mean, it's better, I mean, I give them an opportunity because we like to allow each person the same amount of time. So when I set a person an appointment, it's not like a walk-in. Even if a person walked in, I would set them an appointment for another day where they'll get the whole hour. It takes about an hour and 25 to go through our whole process. Um, you'd be surprised how many people do not want to go through that, that time period and get the application and take it back. And they bring it back. And I look at the punctuality and like, ah. But, um, with that being said, we have a fun, 146 applications that have been completed. Out of that, we have 53 that we have approved. Out of that 53, 34 are Charlottesville. So we have 34 applicants. Actually, there were three or four, a couple of our speakers are partners. And we, we, we don't talk about clients. We don't, we talk about partnerships because it's more than just the loan. A lot of times, we don't even talk about the loan. Um, at this point right now, we have no defaults. Um, we have some people that pay late, but one of the things we talk about is trust and communication. So if you run into a situation, um, contact us. And I am the point of contact, so all it is, is a contact to me, listen, I'm running into a situation. Can we work it out? Yes, we can work it out. Come talk to me if we figure it out, and it's documented. When we talk, just listening to this, to the room and you ask about what are some of the things that I see, support is the biggest thing that I see. Individuals, most people that come out of jail hit the ground running. They want the job. They want the, they want the fines paid off. They want all of these things in a day. One of the things we focus on as soon as you come to my doors, I say patience and process. You got to get them to understand patience and process. It took you X amount of years to get all of these crimes or get all of these offenses. It's going to take you about half of that to get them off. It's not, you, you went through the court to get them. You got to go back to the court to get off of them. So even taking money from the courts is a little different in terms of how it's going to go. Because now, since you can get into a payment plan, well, the Commonwealth of Virginia says, well, if these people get a payment plans, all those, uh, charges that we said we weren't going to go after, we need to get that money too, set them in a payment plan for that. So there are a lot of barriers. My main job is to set them up and get them to the point where when it, I'm expecting a challenge because for all of us, there are challenges in life. A regular person is going to have challenges. So I anticipate and I kind to, I kind of give them a heads up. Everything is good. You're going to have that challenge. When you get to that point, make sure you call. Don't wait. Don't try to figure it out on your own. Because a lot, what I find is, people get in that situation and they don't, is, you, you have about a 24-hour window before a person makes a bad choice and starts to think irrational when they get into, how am I going to pay this? What am I going to do? When you get all that, if it only takes them 10 minutes to say, hey, Mr. Bryant, this is what's going on. Help me with this. Can we do this? Can you move this payment back because my rent going to be late if I got to do this? Yeah, I can bump this. You do whatever. You would, you would not believe how relieved a person is just off of having somebody. And then you think about how many people don't have support. And I'm not even talking about the incarcerated population. I'm talking about people in general who don't have support and where they can reach out. And now all of us say, when you are asked, we're fine. But how many people do you really walk past that are not fine? And you find out later, you know, that person was dealing with something and I really could have helped that person. So from my standpoint, I try to be that support tool and, and kind of push them, individuals that I know of likeness who do the same thing and be that support. And that's what I found to be the most successful for me. And so I have like 53 partners and I get phone calls throughout the day because when, it's, it's two-sided to this. You have your downside, but the successful side comes as well. And so when they're getting new jobs, they're excited to call you and say, got that new job. When they get a new car, they're excited to say, got this new car. Want to do this. And so you get them to buy in to themselves and just to keep growing. But patience and process is the number one thing we got to start reiterating to individuals and just to support. And everything else will fall in. I think Charlottesville has a lot of resources. So it's kind of hard. It's one of those situations where you have so many things that you really don't have nothing because it's like, where do I start? Well, we got to start at somewhere. When we talk about literacy, as opposed to going into a jail and saying, how many people are literate? You probably need to do individual assessments and find out what an individual is so that individual knows, I'm on a third grade level, but that's his business. She's on 11th grade, that's her business. And start them where they are as opposed to say, okay, we're going to do G D and put them in a room and, and everybody looking at like, nah, I definitely know how to do this. I think much like kids, you have to kind of go at the individual and kind of come up with tools. And there are tools not catered for the reentry population. And we're talking about the literacy. We're talking about third, fourth grade level. So that's where we got to go back to, third, fourth grade level and do what you would do with, how you would do an elementary student as opposed to looking at a reentry person that you're trying to get a G D and he's starting third grade and now he's 30 years past. So those are the things that, but from the Fountain Fund standpoint, um, I feel really good about where we are because we got great partnerships all about, and, and so we continually, continually growing. As you can anticipate or you can expect, we got tons of people calling from all over the country because we're the only piece of the, people that do it. But I feel like really Charlottesville is where we got a good hold on what's going on and this is our motto and just keep moving forward. But any questions?
Great job.
Thank you.
Very proud of it.
So, um, because we're over time, but Kathy, I think if you could just summarize, like if you could just briefly talk about what you were going to say then and then we can just do a next step.
I'll just say, sorry, two sentences. One is that there are a lot of common practices in action in our community. Uh, some of them have been longstanding. Some of them are new. Um, and that almost every system of care or individual in the system of care is interested in something else than that. There's, there's no one, uh, no individual entity that's not thinking about how to find additional dollars or support or structure support for peer navigation that the university admires common practice right now in this community. Even large parts give them the full commitment tonight who have been wildly successful. Um, and so that's, that's our intent with the social community navigation. I also think it's really important to turn out and come up a number of times that there are some contextual barriers that are precipitating, or so they stay for days or four weeks, um, that around housing would all go around with a lack of, and so, but, but, I mean, kind of way to approach that's really important or insurance on those kinds of things. Um, and, um, while we have a community of a lot of people like this, we don't have a community that has a really strong set of connections. And so that's where, you know? So it's basically, I think, there's a lot of support we can have, you know? No, no matter how many years we have, we're busy.
I'm Ms. Murphy. So could we, um, look at in terms of hiring, whether that would be us, what, you know, city? I mean, can we get together and have that discussion? I think we probably should schedule another work session.
I think it's a budget session.
I think it's a budget.
It's a budget, budget session discussion about adding a position or a position.
I mean, I'm hearing a need for transitional housing. I'm hearing a need for navigators. But I don't think that stuff should wait until, uh, the. But I, I just want to know how they piece together and what, as you, you give a budget for these. And I want to know how they all work together because you can't, it sounds like you can't just do one and not do another. But we know that it's unrealistic for us to think that we're going to do it all, so we have to stop. So, but is the peer navigator just, is going to be able to just connect everybody so that everyone gets what they need and then the problem solved? Well, we know that that is not going to solve the problem, but we're talking about. So that's what I'm saying. I want to know, what, what is it that we need to solve the problem and then work from there? So you want people to wait until we build housing? I want to have a complete picture. I'm hearing a complete picture here tonight. But I'm not seeing that it's just a peer navigator. So, but you heard everybody who spoke talk about peer navigator. Yes. So that is one part in terms of connection and being able to these, um, what may be considered small amounts like what the Fountain Fund is doing in loan terms. If people need those kind of resources just for some stability, we can't wait till we also have housing for people to go into. I just, I just heard that they need something to connect to. The peer navigator is something to connect to. At least we have everything they need to connect to, I guess, with mine. I just didn't hear that. But what Kathy was just talking about in terms of our resources, we're talking about people on the ground being able to say, this exists. If we are already given money somewhere and it exists, but it's not being helpful, then we need to redirect those funds. Or we need to sit in a room and say, this is how this money could be used better. I think waiting until we have everything in place, um, which is, for me, unrealistic, is not necessarily going to be helpful. I didn't say everything is better.
So, we might have heard a little bit of all those things and I'll just say that. So, um, this is a resource-rich community. Um, but I think that what we know about, uh, the reentry population and many other vulnerable populations is, and kind of the magic of what, uh, Herb or Cindy or somebody else does is they walk alongside people, right? Because, um, a lot of people make it to the first appointment with one of these resources we keep talking about, but not the second. Or maybe they make it to the first two, but not the fifth. Uh, you know, it, it really is the sustained effort of the peer navigator, people who are truly committed to these individuals that makes the, some of the services work. And so some of the service provision that is out there is best practice and is really good, but there aren't, it's, you know, there aren't, it's not the connective tissue, right? To keep people accessing it and to keep people hopeful that a change can happen. So, um, I, I do think that we could probably, not probably. There's no doubt we could make further investments, uh, in housing and other services. But it is also clear, right, that, um, there will never be enough Herbs or Cindys in the environment, right? That, uh, you know, because it is a high-touch business, right? Um, that means that you can't do it but with so many people at the same time, right? Until you tap that service out. And so could we, um, talk about, uh, investing in more, uh, peer navigation in this community? Absolutely. I would say that before we do that, we just want to reconvene with these folks and say, where do those positions live, right? Is that a city position? Is it, uh, another person, uh, embedded in this agency, that agency, or that agency? And we could easily come back and then quantify for council, uh, you know? If there was five more of these people, this is where they ought to be.
There are also lots of models around community health and social media. It could be worth, I can do some investigations, say, where supplies, stuff is, would be leading to that condition. It's going to be, you know, a difficult, I'll make it. say, with the size, that we, we didn't do that initially, we still have to call, how they get, uh, the user. We had some conversations, I don't know, that, that there are some problems about that, because of the situation. Um, but I can't remember, because people were there, so we did, we did, we need to come back to, what, what would that look like? Um, not necessarily, um, happening.
So it'd be good if you all set the goalpost. When do you want us back? Either in this setting, or at a council meeting, to report to you about this?
I think if we looked at early January, that would give enough time to convene the information.
And if we go on a regular council meeting?
Yeah, like, this would be on in a, a Jan.
Agenda, yeah.
Yeah, so if we looked at, like, the first meeting in January, of sorts.
Just keep the story of agenda. So you can directly send the information to the council.
But I think it's also important to make sure, like, what happened here tonight is different from how meetings usually happen, so hearing from people who have been affected, and us not leading the discussion is something very important, and in a council chamber, that's a different setup. So if you need to come back into this style, you know, format, then you all just let us know that. And I also, if we could explore what, um, like, if a participatory budgeting type of situation could work for people who have been incarcerated, would that look like? If we could have that information?
Well, I'd, I'd like to raise one, one idea of what the mayor just said, which, we have talked a little bit about, about doing what the county does, which is alternating meetings, and holding every other meeting in a different setting than council chambers, and shifting to a work session model, but having a, this is, a lot of resources go into extra council meetings, it's an extra, you know, two-and-a-half-hour work session. This is what used to happen, where every, the first Thursday every month was, was a work session. Then we started moving the work sessions into the council meetings, so that more people would see them. But it might be, I think that it would be a great time to revisit staggering it, and having every other meeting, but in a different, could be in a different setting. We could do it at city space, it would be more horizontal. During the day is something we've talked about, it could really change the, and it could make, it could move this into an official meeting, rather than starting to have a whole bunch, we've had a lot of work sessions, and it, and this is a different, just a different thing, but we could, yeah, and I think that there's, I think that there's a lot of interest in this council in doing that, and it could, maybe this is the, I mean, we're, we're doing the retreats, maybe we, we like, put this on that agenda, it's like, do we want to change the way we do meetings? Um, and, and I wanted to say, just as a final thing, I think that this is, I, I think there's a lot of practices out there with this peer-to-peer embedded, you know, that the servicer is, has real commonality with the people who bring service, it's, I, I, you know, this happens in all kinds of areas. So I think that it is, it is, what, it's, it's a best practice. What I would be most interested in seeing is the specific. So, Mr. Murphy, when you said, "There will never be enough peer navigators," I'm not sure that's the case. I mean, you're dealing with a defined population, just like T-Jack has a defined population. We know exactly what, we should know pretty much what the numbers are, and we should know how many people can each of them, of these people serve, you know, and, and what's the range of services they can provide. But I, it feels to me like we ought to be able to, 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 to pretty much identify the, the, the need, and...
I'm, I'm not gonna stretch this out by challenging that, but I'll just say, we're talking about one subpopulation here, in reentry, right? I could embed, you know, eight people who are peer navigators in public housing, or low-income housing, that's a different population, I just, um, the, the question is, what is the level of commitment? And, and these are people who are master connectors, right? That, that's what they do.
How many can you find?
And the trust that they generate among their peers is what makes them successful.
Okay.
And not only find, but just make the investment in, and so that we, they're there. I mean, there are already people with the skills, that we, they're just been underused, right? Um, and so one, I, um, you wanna come up, she's just real quick?
I wouldn't, it's not, it's too long, but. Because I wanna go home as well. But one of the things that I feel that we are kind of, I don't wanna say missing, but we need to include other children. The children are really, um, missing out on a lot of things, and when I say missing out, um, they've had their families to be incarcerated, um, and I don't know what kind of support that they get through this process, because, um, uh, something they don't wanna talk about, they can't talk about it. There's embarrassment, um, in all of this process, that's something that I think we need to also look at. Um, the, the, and even with the, the moms, when they're incarcerated, and then they have their children, have to be taken care of by other family members, or foster care, or whatever, those children still dealing with issues that we don't think about. Um, and I don't know if there's like psychology, psychiatrists, you know, whoever can help these children. And see, it's almost like a situation where, okay, my parents are incarcerated, that's where I'm gonna head to. So this is where we gotta stop that in the bud before.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm gonna, thank you all for, for being here. Um, this is just the first, um, you know, the first discussion. Um, appreciate the work that you're doing, and for you sticking it out with us tonight, and just, um, if you have any recommendations, um, just send them, you know, send them to us, and make sure. And again, the first meeting in January, this will be on the council, um, agenda, and just look out if there's any other, anything else that comes out of this, where there will be meetings in between now and then. And, um, also, he'll have a...
I think this part of our meeting is over, so we're just gonna read into our, our other closed session. So feel free to leave if you'd like. Pursuant to section?
I have another room for you all, so we don't have to rush these.
No, I'm just letting them, they don't wanna hang out and wait for me to say this. Pursuant to section two, point two, thirty-seven, twelve of the Virginia Code, I hereby move that city council closes open meeting and convene in a closed session, as authorized by Virginia Code, section two, two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight, three, and eight, to discuss or consider the disposition of real property for a public purpose, because discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the city's bargaining position or negotiating strategy, specifically to discuss the possible exchange, transfer, or property lease use agreement involving real estate known as Seventh and Market Street Parking Lot, and for consultation with obtaining legal advice from legal counsel employed by the public body regarding specific legal matters having to do with the possible exchange, transfer, or property lease use agreement involving real estate known as Seventh and Market Street Parking Lot. Any second? Call in favor?